Okay, we are assembled for a special town meeting. Pursuant to an article issued by the -- to a warrant issued by the Select Board on the third day of October 2022. Has the town been warned of the business before?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the return of service?
Pursuant to the above warrant directed, I hereby notify and warn all inhabitants of the town of West Newbury who are qualified to move to meet at said time and place. Signed, Constable Ryan Richard, dated 10/6/22.
There are town employees present who are not residents of West Newbury who frequently have information that we could benefit from. They include Wayne Amrell, the Director of the Department of Public Works, Rebecca Ampra, the Assistant Town Clerk, James Blatchford, the Town Clerk, Susan Brown, Planning Director, Maureen Curtin, the Assessor's Clerk, Michael Dwyer, the Police and Fire Chief, Corinne Flaherty, the Director of the G A R Library, Michael Teague, the interim Water Superintendent, Angus Jennings, the Town Manager, Christian Coon, the Chief Assessor, G I S Coordinator, Christine Marshall, from the Council on Aging, and Tracy Watson, Executive Director of the Housing Authority. Is there any objection to having these individuals speak in this beneficial area?
No.
I'm going to make some introductions now because we have a brave new finance committee, so I'm going to introduce them. If you could identify yourselves so that people can see who you are, that would be nice. I'm the moderator. I'm the arbiter of the rules of debate. The Town Clerk is James Blatchford, sitting at the end of the table on my right. The Select Board, David Archibald, the Chair, Richard Parker, the Vice Chair. I want to read them. The Finance Committee, sitting before me at the table below, is Chris Wild, Chair, James Ferenc, the Secretary, Walter Vermeister, Rob Phillips, Daniel Anis, Cross Copalupo, and Angus Jennings, next question. The rules of debate are as follows. Before every town meeting, the Select Board, input from all of various town boards and committees, prepares a warrant that reflects the needs of the town for the funding of town services and conditions, deletions, or changes to the town bylaws. The articles on the warrant constitute the objective of the meeting. No business may be brought before the town unless it is covered by a warrant article. I will read each article and then ask for the recommendation of the Finance Committee. There is an important distinction between articles and motions. Once the warrant for the meeting is posted, articles cannot be removed, revised, or amended. At the meeting, there is no discussion or vote taken on the articles themselves. After the articles read by the moderator and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is heard, a positive motion must be made before any discussion and voting can take place. Motions have been formed. I move that the town, et cetera. A positive motion may be debated, amended, and voted on by voice, hand, or candid vote. A motion to take no action is a negative motion. If the voters agree to take no action, there will be no discussion or vote taken on the action proposed in the warrant article. A motion to take no action is used when the proposed action is no longer relevant or circumstances have changed and the sponsors of the articles want to make changes before bringing it into town meeting. And I'm going to add at this point that it is possible to have more than one main motion brought to the floor under a single article. The form of debate is that the speakers must be recognized by the moderator. Now, while we were meeting outside, we asked everyone to form a line behind the microphone to avoid having a lot of confusion of people moving around during COVID, and it seemed to work out pretty well. So if you don't mind, I think we could continue to use that approach. We have a microphone here, and it's important that you use the microphone so people can hear you. So if you wish to speak to the motion, you simply come up to the microphone and wave your turn in line. Is there any objection to that?
No.
But I think that worked out well. The speaker must be recognized by the moderator, and you will be recognized because you are in the line. Speakers must limit remarks to two minutes. We will maintain a spirit of free and open debate. No personal attacks, no comments directed to specific individuals, no cross-examination, and all questions must be directed to the moderator and asked through the moderator, and only the moderator may ask the opinion of town members. If you wish to make a point of order, you should stay in your seat, stand up, raise your hands and fluff them around wildly, and shout "point of order." Whoever is at the microphone must yield to a point of order. And with that, we will take up Article One. To hear and act upon their reports of town officers and committees, or take any other action relative thereto. There's no recommendation from the Finance Committee on this article, but we have a report from Fred Shinadia from the Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Fred Shinadia, Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. I will be brief. Thanks to the community for your continuing support. You love us, and we love you. I'm pleased to point out that some of the hours have been restored, so we are now open every Saturday, thanks especially to some creative staff planning by our Library Director, Corinne Flaherty. The library also just filed a five-year plan with the state that was a result from, among other things, input from community members. So we appreciate that input very much. We extend our thanks to all of you who participated, and that will be uploaded, that five-year plan will be uploaded on the library website by tomorrow, if you are interested. A brief mention of one budget matter. Last year and early this year, the Library Board of Trustees sought to address the issue of underpayment of hourly wages for our librarians. This was done initially in our code 2023 budget, which would have been voted on at the spring meeting. Based on the wage and salary study that was begun in December or January, based upon some representations from town officials about how and when that wage study would be completed and implemented, the trustees voted to withdraw our budget request for those wage increases pending the outcome of the study. Unfortunately, at this point, at least in the eyes of the Library Board, any wage adjustments are overdue and should be made retroactive to July 1 of this year. That was our understanding at the time that we chose voluntarily to withdraw the wage increases contained in the spring meeting budget request. The trustees would like to inquire if it's appropriate that we share when the wage and salary study will be finalized and implemented so that our librarians can finally begin to earn the fair and equitable wages that they so deserve. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
The good news is we haven't forelooked our meeting. And there is no due at the present time for the appearance of the wage study report. As is our custom, we believe we're going to want to open for the duration of the meeting as some people wish to make their reports directly before the article that we obtain here. And so we'll move on to Article Two. I'm sorry, I had mistakenly written down I would vote your report from Ms. Reed at a different time, and she would like to make it better.
Thank you. I wanted to make a report for the Affordable Housing Trust. You may recall last spring, we voted to adopt, as we were law, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), which allows to establish an affordable housing trust. Following that, the Select Board appointed a bylaw committee to draft a bylaw to say how that would look in West Newbury. And we did that in this past fall. I'm sorry, I had that reversed. We voted to adopt it in October, this last special town meeting. In the spring, we presented a bylaw, and it was passed. And so that Affordable Housing Trust has been appointed by the Select Board. There's seven members. I'm representing the Select Board. We have six other residents with experience and interests and expertise in housing, construction, finance, real estate, social services, and property management. So it's a really great group with a lot of experience. So our charge, we don't view it as reaching the 10% affordable housing goals that we would protect it from Chapter, from 40 million dollars. That's just not practical in a town of our size. What we want to focus on is creating housing that's affordable for residents of West Newbury and people who want to live here, like our town employees, hospital staff, our teachers, seniors, and our young people who are graduating from college and can't afford a place to live in West Newbury. So that's our mission. In order to make that happen, we just hired a housing consultant, and we're going to be working on an action plan over the next three months to identify priorities for West Newbury, and we'd like to have something public in for this part of that. So I just wanted to let you know that we're working hard on that, and it's moving forward, and we look forward to engaging all of you in that effort. Thank you.
Are there any more reports at this time? If not, we'll move on to Article Two. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $250,000 to reduce the current year tax rate, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted for Article One to approve.
Mr. Archibald.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $250,000 American dollars to reduce the current year tax rate.
Is there any discussion?
I will probably be the only one to vote against this article, so I just wanted to point out why. I think it sounds great to return monies to taxpayers. I'm all for that. My concern is that I don't know if it's a good idea for us long term. We don't have a plan that says how much free cash we should have on hand. The D O R tells us 5% of our operating budget, but is that right for West Newbury? Right now, we have upwards of 12%, I think, but we have probably an acquisition of foreseeable future and possibly a development of a well field, so we might need more free cash on hand. Conversely, our stabilization fund has less than the D O R requirements. You know, I think we should have enough in our stabilization fund to fully fund our capital improvement plan, and we don't have that. So what I'm saying is I think we need a plan so that we can make a informed decision about when to return money to the taxpayers and when that money should be invested in other places. So that's why I'm not there with this. And I know most of the Finance Committee voted to approve this, but also expressed the same concern about how I feel. So I hope that the Finance Committee and the Select Board and Town Manager can work together with this mixed spirit and come up with a kind of my own.
Is there further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Inclusionary Housing Account the sum of $193,908.55 to the Affordable Housing Trust, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee votes five to approve.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the Inclusionary Housing Account the sum of $193,908.55 to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Is there any discussion? None of those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $50,000 to provide matching funds upon award of the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant for the fiscal year 2023 round, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee votes five to approve.
Madam Moderator.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000, provide matching funds upon the award of the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant for the FY23 grant round, and to close out any remaining funds to the undesigned fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Is there any discussion? None of those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your green card, and your red cards. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of purchasing and installing new assessing software, including all incidental and related expenses, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee votes five to approve.
Would you please use the microphone?
I vote that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $30,000.
Second.
Could everyone hear this? Yes, you're okay. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. The I side. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $15,000 for the purpose of upkeep and maintenance of town baseball softball divots, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted five, nothing to approve.
Mr. Archibald.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 for the purpose of upkeep and maintenance of town baseball softball divots, including all incidental and related expenses, and to close out any remaining funds to the undesigned fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Is there any discussion? None of those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $8,000 for all the costs and expenses pertaining to identifying, mapping, and remediating invasive species on public lands in the town of West Newbury, including all incidental and related expenses pertaining to any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee votes five, nothing to approve.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,000 for all costs and expenses pertaining to identifying, mapping, and remediating invasive species on public lands in the town of West Newbury, including all incidental and related expenses, and to close out any remaining funds to the undesigned fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Do we have a second? Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $6,500 for the purpose of supporting the preparation of the fiscal year 2023 Safe Roots to School grant application, including all incidental and related expenses, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted five, nothing to approve.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $6,500 for the purpose of supporting the preparation of FY23 Safe Roots to Schools grant allocation, including all incidental and related expenses, and to close out any remaining funds to the undesigned fund balance at the close of FY2024.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $2,100 for the purpose of providing additional funding for early voting, mailman, and election day staff, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted four to zero to approve for form extension.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $2,100 for the purpose of providing additional funding for early voting, mailman voting, and election day staff, including all incidental and related expenses, and to close out any remaining funds to the undesigned fund balance at the close of FY2023.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $16,500 to provide matching funds upon award of the Breeding Communities Grant for fiscal year 2023 round, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted six to approve.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $16,500 to provide matching funds upon the award of the Breeding Communities Grant in the FY23 grant round, and to close out any remaining funds to the undesigned fund balance at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator. Just to be clear, this will be combined with an additional $8,500 that was approved by town meeting, I guess, a year and a half ago for other, you know, for improvements to town buildings. So the total amount will be $25,000. That is spent as a town share of the project, which is improvement of the HBA system controls for the Council on Aging space and part of the 1910s, probably. And so just wanted to be clear that there was still more to this than strictly the $16,500 that were allocated, that we need to allocate now.
Is there further discussion? None of those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise, will vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act Funds Historical Preservation Reserve the sum of $27,500 for the purpose of conducting a historic site survey, including all incidental and related expenses, or take any other action related thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted five, nothing to approve.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act Funds Historic Resources Reserve the sum of $27,500 for the purpose of conducting a historic site survey in conformity with the application for funding filed with the Community Preservation Committee, and to close out any remaining funds to the Community Preservation Act Funds Historical Resources Fund Balance at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act Funds Historical Preservation Reserve the sum of $3,000 for the purpose of historical and site research regarding the Alms House Cemetery, including all incidental and related expenses, or to take any other action related thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted five, nothing to approve.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from Community Preservation Act Funds Historic Resources Reserve the sum of $3,000 for the purpose of historical and site research regarding the Alms House Cemetery, including all incidental and related expenses in conformity with the application for funding filed with the Community Preservation Committee, and to close out any remaining funds to the Community Preservation Act Funds Historical Resources Fund Balance at the close of fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the West Newbury Town Bylaws in Section 36 of the Community Preservation Committee by law, the copy of which revisions are on file and available for viewing in the Town Clerk's office, and further to authorize the Town Clerk to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting so as to ensure consistency with the rest of the town bylaws as necessary, or take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, you know, voted, sorry.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Section 36 of the West Newbury Town Bylaws, Community Preservation Committee by law, as set forth in Appendix A of the West Newbury Finance Committee Report dated October 24, 2022, pages eight through eleven, and to authorize the Town Clerk to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting so as to ensure consistency with the rest of the town bylaws as necessary.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
What this bylaw change would be is not changing the number of people on the Community Preservation Committee, but it is basically changing who is, who would be, how the seats would be divvied up, essentially. And we have a lot of committees where several people are on, several different committees in the town, and this particular seat that would be lost would be for an outlaw, essentially an at-large citizen who's not a member of their town boards and committees. I kind of think it's better, the more diversity in terms of who we have on town boards and committees is better. So I mean, it's not a huge change, and I don't want to go to the wall against this, but I, but I just feel that it's nice that we have people from all over the town that aren't the usual suspects. So that's why I won't go against this.
Although I certainly understand Archie's perspective, and I don't entirely disagree with it, I do nonetheless think it's important to understand that one of the primary purposes for the Community Preservation Committee, or for the CPA, is for open space preservation. So it seems appropriate to me that there actually be a member of the Open Space Committee on the C P C.
Further discussion? Miss Lee.
How many people in the amount on the committee supporting the laws will be?
Seven. Seven.
Yeah, there's seven members, and some of them are set about by the state.
Does the state say ten members?
No. West Newbury added a select board member and the member at large. Those were not dictated by the state.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Now, I did see, okay, let's do that again. When I called for the green cards, I saw a few red cards. So this is confusing. So let's try, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your red cards. The eyes. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to grant the Select Board authority to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load of the residents and businesses in town and for other related services independently or in joint action with other municipalities, retaining the right of individual residents and businesses to opt out of the aggregation and take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted five nothing to approve.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to grant the Select Board authority to research, develop, and participate in the contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load of the residents and businesses in town and for other related services independently or in joint action with other municipalities, retaining the right of individual residents and businesses to opt out of the aggregation.
Is there second? Is there any discussion? Now, all those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. It's unanimous. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the West Newbury zoning bylaw to amend section five A, Residence A, B, and C districts, add a new subsection five A five, uses permitted in Residence C district with a special permit. A copy of which revisions are on file and available for viewing in the town clerk's office, and further, to authorize the town clerk to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting so as to ensure consistency with the rest of the zoning bylaws as necessary, or take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the recommendation is five against zero four. We voted to disapprove unanimously. Madam Moderator, since this is our sole disapproval, I would direct you to the rationale for disapproval that's in your booklet, and I'm sure you've all read before that entire book. I did want to recap for you before the beginning discussions. Our town council has outlined three avenues to provide an economic, feasible use for the soldiers and sailors memorial building. The better of the three avenues would be the most direct. Amend our zoning bylaw to affect only that one unique and historic building. Such a change is permissible under the zoning act. This approach would also be desirable in that no residents in the district would be allowed by special permit to establish a business or professional office as a primary use. We have further concern that a third product may not find the soldiers and sailors building to be of sufficient economic use, but certain residences within the district might be, leading to unintended consequences. We ask that this article be voted down, and at the end of town meeting in six months, a warrant article covering only the soldiers and sailors memorial building be brought forward. Thank you very much.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend section five A, Residence A, B, and C districts of the West Newbury zoning bylaws to add a new subsection five A point five, uses permitted in Residence C district with a special permit, as sent forth in Appendix A of the West Newbury Finance Committee Report dated October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, page twelve, and to authorize the town clerk to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting so as to ensure consistency with the rest of the zoning bylaws as necessary.
Second?
Is there discussion?
Madam Moderator, I think, Tom, for the selectmen, everybody in town, thank you for coming. I gotta say, after I address this, because my bad, hold on. I appreciate the fact that we have a finance committee that proceeds with caution and puts out what I think are rational concerns of unintended consequences and overbroad bylaw changes. I think that's good. I think it's good that we have this discussion tonight. That being said, it's the planning board's opinion that this is a good bylaw change. The intent of zoning is to be fair with everybody in a zone, striking a balance between individual rights and protecting the character of the neighborhood. Now, what's being proposed here for coming forward in the spring is what's known as spot zoning, where you just change the zoning for a tiny little area in town for some reason. Spot zoning provides preferential treatment, for whatever reason, to a small subset of the owners, effectively creating a new type of district. In this case, it would be a special residential district and Residence C. This, I believe, is an unequal application of the law. Why should the owner of this particular site have preferential treatment when somewhere else in Residence C there might be yet a better professional or business office? Something that you might not be aware of is that our current zoning bylaw already allows for a broad array of non-residential purposes, some that require special permits and some that don't. For example, without a special permit, family daycares, board houses, B and Bs, home offices, they're all allowed as it currently stands in the town in Residence A, B, and C. Now, with a special permit, we allow restaurants, hotels, day camps, hospitals, art schools, and restaurants. With a special permit, we allow any use determined to be of similar character to these permitted uses. Thus, specifically calling out a business or a professional office is in line with what we already allow by special permit. The proposed bylaw takes special care to protect the neighborhoods by specifically stating that there shall be no noise, dust, flare, other nuisance public display of goods, exterior storage, or frankly, ugly parking. The special permit is not a rubber stamp. It requires public notification, public input, and that public input matters. I've been on the board for about two decades, and in my opinion, it works. The planning board listens to the public, and that public input has impacted our decisions. As explained earlier, we already allow a wide variety of non-residential uses in residences A, B, and C with and without a special permit. And I contend, I contend that this system has been working well. It just hasn't been a problem. I don't know, I don't know if it's your experience, and if it is, I hope you'll stand up and let us know about it. I don't know that there really has been a problem with all those permits that are currently already allowed in the bylaws. So I don't think that the proposed language is overbroad. And I think I can speak for the board when I say that we believe, though it is rational to be concerned about unintended consequences, that the special permit process that is part of this bylaw proposal provides protections to the citizens of the town and is fair to all the residents. I don't know if you noticed when it came in, there's a map that shows where the Residence C district is in town, and there are already a bunch of existing businesses and whatnot, some of which have grandfathered in. I think this is an appropriate use. And then, by the way, even if we pass this tonight, it doesn't mean the soldiers and sailors building will fly through. It means that they will have to go through a special permit process, and there'll be input from the neighbors and all that. And they'll have to figure out all the details, make sure that the use is appropriate. I've got lots more information here. It's the last thing tonight. Glad to answer questions, madam moderator, if any, or if you'd like to. Thank you.
Right. What's the role of the ZDA if this passes? Will they have to see, will one applicant have to see?
This is beyond that. We already rescinded the funds from the CPA that we're going to use for restoration of this building. And now the current idea is to sell the building.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking the ZDA. Will an applicant need to go before the ZDA in addition to the planning board for a special permit?
Is there a member of the ZDA here who wishes to address the question? Okay, Mr. Jennings?
The answer is the ZDA would need to approve in either scenario because it's a pre-existing non-implant structure, it's a pre-existing non-implant lot. So any reuse where there's been a lapse of use for one or two years would need to go to the ZDA in addition to the planning board.
Would they go to the ZDA first or the planning board first?
Okay, listen. If you wish to speak, please use the microphone because people can't hear the question, and it gets to be across examination. So if you want to pursue this and ask another question, please do.
If this doesn't pass, would they, would an applicant need to go to the planning board as well as the ZDA? Or if it does pass, let's say that it doesn't pass, an applicant would just go to the ZDA, or would they go to the planning board and the ZDA? Both? Under both scenarios, they have to go to the ZDA.
No.
Okay, let's not have this.
I'm just trying to see which option is more of a regulatory, has more efficiency from a regulatory perspective. In my opinion, as a voter, or if you're a voter, it would be more preferable for the town to set up a regulatory framework that does not require going to two boards in town to achieve reuse of this building.
Fine, okay. Mr. Phillips?
To answer your question, what's, there are three avenues that the town could go through. Town council has addressed that. One is what the planning board is proposing, and that would require simply to go before the planning board, correct?
No.
Well, okay, so the second, the second way is like the first. It would involve the planning board. The third way would require both the ZDA and the planning board to participate. So they are different in that regard. The third way that was mentioned does involve both of those areas.
Mr. Phillips, did you want to address?
I defer the expertise of him. So it's been said now twice that town council had laid out three options. That's not actually correct. So that, you're not right, are you? No. Not that town council overlooked, since that's said. Planning board and the select board. They worked out three options.
Okay, three options.
Right, right, that's right.
I just wanted to ask Angus to clarify what he had just said a minute ago. Because when Brad asked that question, I don't know if you were talking about the special permits or specifically about soldiers and sailors. But I think that the response was specifically soldiers and sailors.
Yeah, my.
So that building aside, if this were to pass, do the special permits have to go by ZDA or just the planning board?
That's a great one, Russ.
So what's being proposed here would apply to Residential C and what I personally believe is fair and equitable. The specific soldier and sailors building is a special case. As we all know, it's our own special amp. And because it has not been used for the last couple of years, because it's a pre-existing non-implant use, no matter what happens, no matter whether this passes or it doesn't pass, it's going to have to go before the ZDA. Now, if this passes, then it would come straight to us for the special permit process to be approved as a office. If this does not pass, then the ZDA, I believe, and I'm not sure about this, so that's what I'm trying to say, the ZDA would have to see if it would fit into our existing bylaw as a use consistent with the other uses we allow by special permit. And when this first came before the board, it was my opinion, we didn't have to change any bylaws or anything, that it would conform to this as a similar use to those that are already permitted under our existing bylaws. What this bylaw does, though, is make it more specific and in fact, actually restricts it to just Residential C, whereas the other applies to all reference districts. So these are kind of like nitpicky things, but that's my understanding.
In general, dead set against spot zoning, but it's, Mr. Kupchak said this is a special case. This, and the exception I take with it is this is town-owned property that we're changing. So I don't mind making a specific rule for specific town-owned property. I don't consider this spot zoning, and I don't think we should be changing the law for the all zones, the just for one property.
No, in one of his papers.
Right. I'm totally amused by this article. And I'd like to know what the selectmen's opinions were on their three to zero approval. I don't know which way to go. If you could be clarified a little more, to the left person. How many people feel that way? Yeah. Thank you.
To answer your question, the selectmen voted in favor of this zoning change because we felt that it was the best way to make it possible for somebody to purchase this building and restore it. We thought it was the simplest way. There is still a fair amount of permitting, but this at least sets up a pathway ahead of time so that a potential buyer could see, okay, there's a special permit, I understand how to go forward. The other options did not seem as clear, and there are concerns about spot zoning even though it is a town property currently.
So basically makes it easier to sell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Just to be clear about one point, this is not in any way spot zoning. So we can debate whether it's ethical or fair to do it one way or the other way. But I hope that people will stop referring to this as spot zoning. You've got a very good reason from a previous speaker as to why it's allowed in the state to preserve a unique and singular building. This is in fact allowed in the state. There's other reasons why. If the town likes to do a zone, however large that zone is, it's not spot zoning, we're doing it for our benefit, our benefit either way, whether you vote for the planning board proposal or you vote for what I would say is the sole, sole building proposal. Either way, we're doing it for the benefit of the town. Whichever way you choose, one way or the other way, you're doing it for the benefit of the town, and we should take this action. We just don't believe we need to apply it to the entirety of the district. And as to the third avenue, we think that it is more comfortable and less likely to entice an interested buyer. So you do have a choice tonight. Have fun with it. Ray Jones is great to listen to. Me, me not so much.
Well, I want to at least thank the finance committee to raise a flag because I'm looking at. at that map, and just a funny mind property, very interesting. So that, and that begs the question. So taking the, you know, soldiers and sailors, sailors building out of this equation, what is the impact for all the other properties in this district? Does it, you know, materially change how people would be able to get things approved in that district separate from sailors and soldiers? Thank you.
Mr. Cook?
Madam, so yes, if this bylaw passes, it means that anybody in Residence C, which is a big district, chiefly along 113, but broader than that, if somebody anywhere in Residence C had what they thought would be a good business use for their property, that would be respectful of the neighborhood, comply with all the restrictions here, they could then come before the planning board for a special permit for that business. Frankly, they can do it now.
Well, that, I mean, I see the difference, yeah.
Yeah, but this, this is, this is called out specifically for Residence C. And so it's more direct than trying to first establish your proposed office as a use in the spirit of the other uses that we allow by special permit. So it calls out specifically, and it adds actually some restrictions to it. So that we can be assured in law that it's, it's not up to the whim of the planning board members after the update. So I think it's an improvement on what we have now. Because it restricts this business office use to Residence C instead of A, B, and C. It adds restrictions to the proposed use. So that if, you know, if they, if they can't comply with the restrictions in the proposed bylaw, then they couldn't even come to a special permit. Or if they did, we'd say that your special permit's not in compliance with the bylaw, so it's, it's, it's a dead issue. But if everything looks right according to the bylaw, they fit the restrictions, they come before us, and then the voters are invited in, everybody's invited in to give the input, in the end, we have to decide, like with all special permits, there's a section eight in the bylaws. And it means that for us to approve it, the specific site is an appropriate location, the use will not adversely affect the neighborhood, there will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard, the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw, and the requested use will not overload any public water drainage. There's more language here. But basically, and every time we have a special permit, I'm looking this up and rereading it again. In order to approve any special permit, it has to meet these goals and objectives. So I think our bylaw, I think our bylaw is good, and that's why it hasn't been an issue. You know, that's why we haven't had anybody worried about Ben Breck's restaurants, funeral homes, sawmills, allowed, are allowed by special permit, radio stations, utility structures, nonprofit clubs, nursing homes. I mean, it hasn't been a process of a problem. And I think that's because our bylaw is carefully written to prevent it from being a problem.
Mr. Jennings?
I appreciate that explanation, Ray. I didn't get to talk to you previously, but I understand you're clearly, really, very knowledgeable. I think what I don't understand is what the advantage is. It's already essentially the same rights in code as it's, in fact, if the existing bylaws are more broad than what has been drafted, I don't understand how more restrictive bylaws make it more hard.
So we see more remarkable, that draws us back to the soldiers and sailors building, which was the impetus behind all this thought, Karen? Yeah, I, I think it makes it more remarkable because the use is specifically called out business or professional office. And that phrase, those four words, they don't exist in our existing bylaws. And so when you specifically tell the world that we can allow a business or professional office in residential C, providing that meets these standards, and you go through this special permit, then it's a clear pact. Right now, it's, it's sort of amorphous, you know? Is a business or professional office similar to a restaurant, hotel, telephone exchange, funeral home, nursing home? You know, and you could argue, yeah, or, you know, it's not like a sawmill. So I think that's why it clarifies it. And I think whenever you're thinking business plan, clarification helps.
Mr. Wilder?
So many thoughts about this. The first one is, this article should be taken as an endorsement or opposition to the sailors and soldiers building. And I think most people in this room want to see that building preserved. Maybe it's a broad statement. On this committee, we all would like to see it preserved, especially with a private party. But I don't think that this zoning change is the best option for the town. To accommodate one property, which has two other methods to accomplish it, a little bit more work, but not significant, you're going to encumber an entire C district with this regulation. And this also allows for the primary use of the building to be an office or a business. That's a big statement. So basically, it's saying the town would let office properties intermix with residential properties if this passes, and you can comply with criteria, which are very difficult to comply with. But in fact, the zoning traditionally creates rural character that we want in Westover. We appreciate it so much. So although the exterior of these new office buildings potentially won't be on the sailors and soldiers building, although they could look very nice, to have a family living in one house and an office adjacent to it is not the same as having neighbors. It's a whole different feeling and flavor, and that's what zoning tries to protect. So I strongly would like to see the sailors and soldiers preserved, but I, I just don't understand this broad brush approach on this zoning change. I would really strongly encourage you not to support it.
Are people sufficiently informed about what you're voting for? Does anyone have anything to do with the subject? Are you sure it's new?
Yeah, it's short.
Okay.
I just want to say that the planning board is not trying to impose anything on the town. We come to the town with what we think is, is a good solution or a good bylaw. And then it's up to you folks to decide. And it's not going to hurt our feelings one way or the other. The planning board thinks this is the best way to go. But if you disagree, that's just fine. Thank you.
Yes, Marlene Switzer, and I live in, Marlene Switzer, Paul Wessley Lane.
Ms. Switzer, do you have to stand closer to the light?
I did not intend to speak to everybody tonight. I apologize for not being very organized. But about six years ago, when, when I was looking for a move, and I saw that building, it was just like nothing I had ever seen before, anywhere around the Green Ford, Westford, anywhere in Massachusetts up this way. And I became involved in trying to save it. Was on a number of committees that were, worked very hard and spent some money initially to have people come in from Boston with amazing credentials, having saved beautiful buildings, but in different places. And I was inside the building and spoke with those folks. Mostly what I heard from them is they had just never seen anything like this building. And we're talking about people who've been in Boston. I was just so impressed, and I was so sure everybody would feel like I did. But then I saw the kind of money it was, and they were building a new high school, a real school, and all the other things. And I, and the committee dissolved. And I was able to go back in after, I think, two years. And the heat had been turned off because no decision had been made about what to do. And the amount of, the way it looks now is nothing like it looked before. But somebody has blessed it with the windows, still pretty much being intact. And I mean, the original glass and everything. And all I could think is, nobody is going to like this building being knocked down. And then I started to hear more. Knock it down and save some money or sell some worth or whatever. The main thing is that there is an individual, and it doesn't have to be the one who stepped forward, but there is someone who's in town, who has, his business is historic preservation, and it's proven in another place. And he has all of the right connections for grants. He has the intellect related to historic reservation. He's done it, the building he's in now. And he is willing to take all of this on because he has his family here in this town, and he would like to work here in that building. And if we say we're going to wait until the annual meeting, I don't know if the building's going to be able to remain. The turret is already gone, and things inside are just going fast. But there is somebody, there's just one person. I don't know what would happen if zoning has changed this way. Maybe there would be others with the same kinds of connections and interest and love for the building. But I, what I really wanted to ask about is this residential C. Aren't there businesses, interspersed with houses?
That question has been addressed, and there are special permits in C.
I mean, that exists now. So I don't think that that area is, that I don't think that, I don't, as a resident, don't think of it as having rural character. There are all sorts of businesses, and many are not very attractive, but they tend to involve people, and it gets long. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand what zone we're talking about, that it's Main Street, and it's the gas station, things like that. And, you know, everybody appreciates it. So that's it. I just, that's all. I just wanted to let you know what I was thinking, and maybe some of you loved.
Is there something new?
Just quick. One curiosity, which was drawn up by another member, is more we're discussing it. Let's assume this passes. Then make a wild guess, the sailors and soldiers doesn't happen. What has happened then is the entire C district now is covered with this zoning regulation, if the building does not get saved. So again, there are unintended consequences, which is every other property in the C zone, which is significant. It's all the way down Main Street, it's along the side streets. It's massive. It's well over a third of the town. So this regulation isn't just for the one building, it's for the whole C district.
Mr. Cook?
Just very quickly, we disagree on your terminology. I don't view this as encumbering all the properties in Westover. So we, we disagree on that. Yeah.
I have a question. Why is this limited to District C? Why not the AM? If you're going to pass a bylaw, why not have it for every area? If you're going to destroy a city, or a town, best way to do it is, I suspect, the Commonwealth, if you may, is probably, we'll have four hotels, we'll be allowed. And, but so moving back to the article, well, uh, not 10 years, 115 years since we had a place to go. I just don't understand why, with the opening threshold, and then, oh, 10 years from now, oh, what are we, oh, what's trying to come back? Why are they going to come and say, no, you're just prejudiced against this use of that use, and that's why you don't want it. You want it as a residential district, it's a town-owned residential district. I, you know, read the history, go back 115 years. A lot of this town is not a residential district that is residential, but either way, water is a residential area, not just the C, but also the other districts. We should make up our mind. Otherwise, we'll have hotels and schools. Who knows what else we could have?
Is there, is there anything new to offer on this subject? Are we ready to vote? Please, please take your seats.
Sir, if you'd please not have to answer your question, a discussion of zoning areas A and B is out of order on this question. And this is a zoning article change, so it requires two votes. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to take a, a quick vote and see how close it is, but we will probably have to count it. So all those opposed to this, please raise your hands. All those in favor of this, please raise your hands. Okay, if this not passes with two votes. Now, before we adjourn the meeting, I can ask to announce that there will be early voting available in the town offices for one more hour after the end of the meeting. So if you wish to vote on your way out, go right into the nineteen candlelight. This closes the end of the line. Is there a motion for your?
Oh.
All those in favor, say aye. No, we return.